Chairman.
President?
Vice Chair.
Here.
Mr. Corret?
Here.
Councilmember Delkey?
Here.
Mr. Solhead?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Bignell is not present. Mr. Reader is not present. And Mr. Ruzin is not present. Attorney moving?
Here.
Mr. Bignell?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Okay, acceptance of minutes, none. On to resolutions. There are four of them tonight. Number P-12-2019, Federal Express Ground Package System 25 to 53 Talmadge Road.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve P-12-2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, Lillian?
I'm just reminding the board, if you weren't here, then just abstain. Mr. Geary?
We have a question on the floor, Lillian.
Oh, what?
Who was here?
Corret, Danielle, Peasey, Pipola, Reader, Geary, Sandusky, Soltes, and Singh.
On the gap in the resolution, John, with names...
Who voted and had it? On the last or second-to-last page of each resolution.
Mr. Geary?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Delkey?
Yes.
Mr. Solhead?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Abstain.
Mr. Ruzin?
Okay, the next one, amended P-2-2017, Camp Kilmer, Urban Renewal Associates, Row 2.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve P-2-2017.
I'll second.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Geary?
Yes, to approve?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Delkey?
Yes.
Mr. Solhead?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Abstain.
Mr. Singh?
Abstain.
This resolution is...
Okay, number three on our list, area in need of redevelopment, 1696 Oak Tree Road, J.K. Estates.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve property located... Resolution for property located at 1696 Oak Tree Road.
Madam Chair, second motion?
Well, we have two. You have...
Mr. Geary?
Yes, to approve?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Delkey?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Solhead?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Abstain.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
The last one is another area in need of redevelopment, 1820 Vineyard Road, Mandy's.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for property located 18-20 Vineyard Road.
Madam Chair, second motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Geary?
Yes, to approve?
Yes.
Mr. Corret?
Yes.
Councilmember Delkey?
Abstain.
Mr. Solhead?
Yes.
Mr. Peasey?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Abstain.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Okay, old business, none. On to new business. P-5214 Goldberg Builders, 45 Preston Street, Block 161.U, Lot 14.C. And the applicant is coming forward.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Joseph Bonk, B-O-N-K, office on Oak Tree Road here in Edison. And I have the pleasure of presenting this application on behalf of Goldberg Builders. We are here tonight seeking a minor subdivision to create three new residential lots. It is located in an RB zone, and the subdivision will, if granted, comply with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, except lot width as to two of the three lots. The two non-conforming lots will contain 70 feet width as compared to the 75 feet which is required under the ordinance. These two lots are interior lots. The third lot, which has 76 feet frontage, is the corner lot. We would like to point out at this point that the area required in this zone is 7,500 square feet. However, the two lots that need the variance for lot width will contain 10,800 square feet, and the third lot, 13,000 square feet. To construct the proposed dwelling, there will be different architectural designs, and I will submit these to the Board at the end of... Or do you want me to do that now?
Lilly?
We're going to need to mark this as A1.
Oh, we'll share.
Or at least three different houses.
I think they're... They're packing. Just two different houses.
Oh, it was? Oh.
That's right. When I gave them out, I had the three, but we'll figure it out. I have them in my card.
Right.
We'd also like to show, as you can see by the plans that were submitted and marked A1, that all of the building will occur within the building envelope. So let's move on to the C requirements, and I'd like to have Mr. Paul Fletcher qualified as a professional engineer and professional planner sworn in.
Yes, I do. Please state your name and spell. Paul J. Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-A-G-R.
Will the Board accept and stipulate as to Mr. Fletcher's qualifications?
I would just ask, you're still licensed in this state of New Jersey?
Yes, as both an engineer and a planner.
And you're giving testimony tonight as...
As both.
Yes. We'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, did you in fact prepare or have prepared under your supervision the minor subdivision plan?
Yes.
And could you describe what the plan is proposing?
Certainly. The subject property commonly known as 45 Preston Street, it's also known as Lot 14.C in Block 161.U. It's located in the RB zone. It is located at the... On the northerly side of Preston Street. Total property area is 34,882 square feet, almost an acre, .801 acres. The applicant proposes to demolish all existing structures. There's an existing one-and-a-half-story framed dwelling and a detached garage and driveway. All improvements will be demolished. The applicant further proposes to subdivide the property into three lots. Each lot would have a single-family dwelling constructed on it. Each dwelling would have an attached two-car garage and associated driveway. The application does require, as Mr. Bonk mentioned, two variances. Proposed Lot 1404 has a lot width of 70 feet versus the 75 required. Lot 1405 similarly has a proposed lot width of 70 versus the 75 required in the RB zone. The corner lot, 14.06, is fully conforming with regards to lot width. All of the lots are well in excess of the required 7,500 square feet. In addition to the construction of the homes, there is proposed reconstruction to center line of Preston Street along the property frontage. In rainy weather, you'll notice some ponding. We intend to rectify that situation by installing new curbs and gutters, milling to the center line, and repaving the full property frontage of Preston Street. We are in receipt of two reports, one from Delaware Raritan Engineering by Mr. Charles It's dated Monday, August the 5th, 2019. I've gone over the report. I won't go item by item. Most of the comments are statements of fact, noting that we're doing various things and proposing things. The few things that Mr. Carley has suggested we provide, for example, the sidewalk easement should be characterized by meets and bounds on the subdivision plan, we certainly will do so. And I don't see any other issues that we would have any problem complying with.
So is it conclusive that the DNR report will be complied with in all its respects?
Yes. With regard to Mr. Bignell's report, which is dated July 15th, 2019, I move to his Section 11 Plan Review Comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Bignell?
My latest report is dated August 1st.
Thank you.
Commenting on Mr. Bignell's August 1st report, going to Section 11 Plan Review Comments, paragraph A requires a documentation of approval from Middlesex County, Field of Soil, and any other agencies having jurisdiction. We will provide that proof of approvals. Applicant should provide testimony and graphic display indicating how many lots within 300 feet of the subject property have similar or smaller lot widths as proposed. I have prepared an exhibit, color-coded copy of the Edison tax map.
I'd like to have these exhibits marked A2, please. Now, Mr. Fletcher, did you in fact prepare what has been identified as A2?
Yes, I did.
And could you describe what is shown on that exhibit?
Yes, this is a portion of the Edison tax map. Subject property is highlighted in blue. I've highlighted the properties within 200 and 300-foot radius that are non-conforming with regards to lot width. They are color-coded orange. Within the 200-foot radius, there's a total of 12 properties. Of those four are non-conforming within... With regard to width, that's 33 percent. Within the 300-foot radius of the 23 total properties, 11 are non-conforming in width, that's 48 percent. And I also looked at all the properties along the Preston Street frontage, and of the 15 other buildings, properties, eight of those are non-conforming with regard to lot width. That's 53 percent of the total of properties with frontage on Preston Street. I enter this exhibit to show the Board that the proposed variance request is not inconsistent with the neighborhood pattern. In fact, the majority of the undersized lot widths are smaller than 70 feet. In fact, I believe they all are. We are requesting a five-foot deviation from the required 75-foot setback. In my opinion, that is essentially de minimis.
And, Mr. Fletcher, if this application were to be approved, would the population density be consistent with the neighborhood with these homes?
Yes, it would.
And would the development of this property into three single-family homes, would it pose a substantial detriment to the public good?
In my opinion, it would not.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood?
No, there's a number of new homes that have been built over the last few years. This would be very consistent with that.
Would the approval of this application substantially impair the intent and purpose of the municipal master plan or zoning ordinance?
In my opinion, it would not.
And we would conclude with Mr. Bignell's report that everything in his report requested would be complied with, the tree program?
Yes, I did... I neglected to address a couple of Mr. Bignell's comments.
Why don't you go through them now?
We just provided information with regard to paragraph B. Paragraph C asks how we will protect the trees during construction. There are tree protect details on the soil erosion plans. I will have them added to the minor subdivision plan as well. And D requests architectural elevations of the proposed dwellings, different house plans proposed. We have provided those. I'll let Mr. Bignell decide if they're sufficiently different. And with regard to E, pipeline buffering information shall be provided. We are not within the 75-foot distance from a pipeline. We'll provide proof to that effect. I believe the Board can grant this subdivision and two variances under the flexible C2 criteria, where the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. Have a functionally obsolete property. We're going to provide three new homes for Edison citizens. We're going to provide an improvement to the infrastructure along the front of the property. We're going to propose development clearly within the density characterized in this neighborhood, and I see no detriments to public good, master plan, or the neighborhood.
Could you just go back to A1, please? And what are the percentages of undersized lots on Prescott?
You mean A2?
A2, I'm sorry.
The... There are 15 properties fronting on Preston. Of those eight are non-conforming with regard to lot width, that's 53 percent.
I have no further questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
Just two points. The pipeline buffering... Those letters need to come from the pipeline buffering companies, not from Mr. Fletcher's office. I just wanted to make them aware of that. That has to be... They have to be requested. Okay, Paul? I mean, I...
Yeah.
Okay.
That's easier said than done.
Well, no, that's the rule here, and that's the reason why I'm pointing it out, because you sending me a letter doesn't do it.
Okay. Well, I can give you copies of the letter I sent to the pipeline company.
No, I want a letter from them saying that there's no pipeline within 75 feet of your property.
Okay.
They send them out. Madam Chair, the other thing is too, the three elevations, that shouldn't be up to me. It should be up to the Board to decide, like, you know, what the elevations... I don't... I mean, I'll do it if you actually want me to do it as, you know, as a condition, but I think that the Board should decide what the elevation should look like. That's it.
I think everyone's looking at the elevations right now. We only have two here. Does anyone have a third?
Madam Chair?
Yes, councilman?
Which house is going on which lot? Did you... You didn't mark it. Do you know which one is going on which lot?
There's A, B, and C. And it goes from... Standing in the street, it goes from left to right. I hope you've got A, B, C, and not three A's.
I got three plans, but it doesn't indicate which lot it's going in. What? Yeah, it doesn't.
On the first page, it should be in the block.
The first page in the title block says what?
It'll say 45A or 45B.
45A, 45B, 45C.
45C Preston Street.
Oh, I see.
It said the address on the title block.
Correct.
For each one, 45A, 45B, 45C.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
And it goes from left to right. A is left.
Yes, Mr. Corret?
I'd like to ask, Lot 13A, 14B, and 15E, are those all Edison High School property?
Yes, they are.
It backs up to the ball fields.
Yeah, the football field, baseball field.
Yeah.
Mr. Pipola?
Was there any attempt to reach out to Edison or the school district to see if you could acquire that extra nine feet you needed?
We did not, no. That is... Paul, could you describe, it's a right-of-way for...
Well, there's also property on this side.
We did not, Mr. Pipola.
I get it.
Not sure if anyone else had any comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Peasey?
Mr. Fletcher, you mentioned that you saw a problem of puddling on Preston.
Yes.
And you're going to rectify that?
Along our property frontage, yes.
Oh, it's just along your property front?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the extent of the problem, just in your front?
I think there's some puddling down the road.
Okay. And how do you propose on solving that problem?
Well, for her, as I mentioned, we're going to reconstruct the road along our property frontage, so it has a positive slope in a westerly direction.
And I'd like to ask, Mr. Fletcher, do we... Are we within the impervious cover requirements?
Yes, we're not requiring...
Good time.
We're not requesting variances for any... Anything except for the lot width. And we also are providing stormwater management facilities in accordance with the Edison Township Ordinance requirements.
Any comments from engineering?
One of our comments, or it's with Mr. Fletcher, we comply with is that they are in compliance with the stormwater management, and that it's not each requirement to be resolved. So that's... And, Mr. Geary, based on the testimony, did we comply with that requirement?
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasey?
Mr. Fletcher, is there a catch basin in that area?
There is not.
There's not? So how are you... How are you going to take care of the excess water? Where are you going to root it to?
Well, there'll be overland flow to the gutter line.
Okay.
And it will go down the street. There will be a system somewhere down the street, but not in front of ours.
Okay.
Mr. Soltes?
Mr. Fletcher, is there a storm sewer in the road?
Not in front of our property, no.
I got a question, Madam Chair.
Yeah, councilman?
So where is the nearest storm sewer? Do you... I mean, you must know, right?
To be honest, I don't.
Any other questions or comments? I think maybe at this point, I open to the public.
Can I just say that...
You have more for your testimony?
Mr. Fletcher has also indicated in compliance with Mr. Carley's letter that there will be groundwater recharge drywells for each of the proposed lots.
Okay, that... Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasey?
That was going to be... I noticed that the requirement's 40 percent impervious, you're only 28 percent, but you are going to provide for the runoff, the building, the drywall?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
One for each lot, yeah.
That'll improve the water situation.
Okay, so I think at this point...
Just one question with engineering. Is that sufficient, one drywall that we're talking about? The size and shape that you've looked at, that's sufficient to handle all runoff from those lots?
There's one drywall for each house.
Yes.
So there's actually three. And based on the calculations that have been submitted to us, yes, it will handle the runoff.
Do you know offhand when you say, yes, it will handle? Is it the... Will it... Your estimate of handle 80 percent of runoff, or... I mean, it should be 110 percent of the runoff?
No.
Relative to the capacity and runoff?
They're designed to handle the storm that was required for them to approve... For them to design to, per the Edison ordinance.
Right.
So they're designed to handle the storm.
Mr. Fletcher, your comment about... I didn't catch your first comment about the water running off to the front of your property or something. Did you make a comment to that extent?
I said that the grading is designed such that there'll be overland flow across... Towards the street, so it'll run across the sidewalk and into the gutter line.
So the drywells are to take all the...
Takes the roof leader drain.
Roof leader drains and everything, and the parking... The rest of it, you're just going to let it flow onto the street?
That's what's happening now. It's overland flow over grass.
So in effect, right now, it's all flowing to the street. When you put drywells in, that amount of water runoff should be reduced by the amount that the drywells take up?
That's correct. That's correct.
Let's go out and give anybody.
Yes, so at this point, I'd like to open to the public, please come forward, your name and address.
Good afternoon, good night. I'm Sam LaHisco, I live at 48 Preston Street, which is right across the street from 45. And first of all, we're talking about water, I lived there for 21 years, and the water situation?
Do you want to have questions or comments?
Well.
Do you have questions for this witness, or are you making comments?
I'll make comments then, okay?
But I need to swear you in.
Okay.
Do you solemn swear affirm the testimony, about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You may proceed.
Okay, getting back to the water, that diverted me from what I was originally going to say, but the water in Preston Street is horrendous every time there's rain, there's always at least four foot in front of my driveway, I heard them mention that that water from the other side is coming to my side, I got some concerns with that. The curbing is going to be great, but you know what, there's nowhere for the water to go, other than the curbing, there's no sewers there, I don't know where the closest sewer is, but in addition to that, I'm opposed to the three homes because of, first of all, there's one family now across the street, there's four cars in that family, when they park one of the cars out in front of that street during school hours, it is a nightmare, only one car can get passed at a time, and it's like 20 minutes you can't get out of your driveway until that's done. The other part I'm concerned about is the addition to the school system, taxes are high enough in Edison, Jersey, without some more, like, there, in the last eight years that I say there, it's probably been at least three homes, single-family homes, that have been converted over to two, two, two-family homes, on at least three lots, so, that's my stand, and I also have, two of my neighbors who are on vacation have letters that they oppose to the three homes also, so if you would like them, I would be glad to hand them over to you.
We can't accept those, we have to be able to cross-examine any witnesses.
Okay.
Mister, can I, can I say one thing to Mr. Hisco?
And then, Mr. Paul.
Mr. Hisco?
Yes.
He's a friend of mine.
Please speak into the mic, too.
We were friends.
Yeah, we're.
I'm sorry.
I just want to point out that we do comply with the parking space requirements, just four parking spaces.
I understand, but the person I'm talking about now, there's one family, they got four cars, they don't fit, they could fit four cars in driving, but they don't, they always leave them out front, so we're going to have three houses, probably three more cars, or nine cars, where they want to park. It's, you know, it's, you know, okay, thank you.
Kevin, next first, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Paul.
Yeah, I have a question to the, Mister?
Yes, yeah, come back.
Is there a curb right now?
There's no curb, there's curbs on the three houses that they split up for a single-family to, there's curbing there, but the water is worse on those two houses, because it stands there all the time.
Okay, so I have a question to Mr. Fletcher, so there's no curb, right now the water's coming to the street, and once you put a curb, so, and you have a drywall, drywall, so only the water coming to the street is going to be, which is left on the driveway, correct?
Mm-mm, I'm not quite sure I understood your question.
Okay, so right now, the, the property doesn't have any curb, so water can come down to, are you saying, he's saying that a lot of water comes to the, in front of his house, so, once you put a curb, so it will stop somehow, some of the water coming to the street, correct?
No.
Okay, just going to block it.
From the property?
But I, I would point out, the, the, the road has a crown, and we will maintain that crown, so any water from our property stays on our side of the street, it's not exacerbate any issues on the opposite side of the street. The property, right now, the water goes to the, I'll call it edge of pavement, it's not a gutter line, but it's, you know, where the grass meets asphalt, that's where the water, it goes now, so we will be replacing that interface with a curb, or curb and or whichever the standard is in the neighborhood. But right now, the, the profile of the road is sort of up and down, so that's what's causing the puddling. We've designed a, a profile for the reconstructed road that we have a positive slope in the direction that the water goes now.
I have a question, like, a question, question to his concern, it's going to be three driver, drive out, which is, doesn't exist at this point, but will it help?
No.
The, the drywalls are designed to take into account the new impervious from the houses, it's, all the existing water that's there now is still going to go onto the street, and there's actually a high point in, in the, in the center, in the road, by the middle lot, so the water's running along the curb line going in both directions.
Okay.
As you've heard Mr. Fletcher say, it, he's designed this, that he believes it's going to the nearest inlet, but he doesn't indicate where the nearest inlet is, so, I mean, I think it would, you know, I think he really should be able to show on the plans where the nearest inlet is in both directions, and how far away that is, I think that would be helpful to the board.
Because if it's not that far, Mr. Fletcher, I mean, it's possible you can tie into that inlet, or actually put a, put a catch basin right there, so it would alleviate any, any water that's coming, you know?
That would be possible.
For the people in front of the house, right, so, maybe you could tie into that, and, and alleviate any water issues that, that are occurring for these people there right now. The, the second question I have for you is, where in relationship to the grass now, because we're looking at a Google Earth map of the, of the area, where the, where the grass is and the, and the house is, where is your curb line going to be? Are you going to be widening that area of the road to move the curb back, is it going to be in the grass area? I mean, you have a, a sidewalk coming out to the street there in a mailbox on the Google Earth map right now, so I'm just wondering where that curb line's going to be?
It's actually going to be, on the west side, it'll be slightly in the grass, but then it'll go into the pavement as it gets to the intersection of Center Street.
Could you say that again, a little louder?
Yes, it'll, it'll impact about a, I would say, a foot or a foot and a half of grass area at the west end, but it'll slowly taper towards, into the pavement area at the intersection of Center and Preston.
And then, and then the other thing that I'm concerned about is, is I don't want you to take the water, solve the, you know, solve the water problem in front of your house, and then dump that water into those other houses that are down further on the street, because that'll create a, create a problem there, so I, I would, I would think that if you could tie into that catch basin and solve that water issue, that will create more of water, especially for the winter, for those people there.
May I say something? I just thought I heard Mr. Fletcher say that the water will direct it westerly, westerly is the school property, and there's nothing but just dirt and grass there, and so, so it's, it's going to go back to where it was the other way.
Actually, it's, I misspoke, I had forgotten I designed a high point in the, in the middle, so some of the, of the water comes easterly, and then it's designed to go across the street to the gutter line of Center Street.
Did you want to say something, or?
Yes, I'll let them speak, but then I would like to say something, yes.
Okay. Your name and address?
My name is Bolli, I live in a 50 Preston Street.
You have to talk into the microphone?
I live on a 15, 50 Preston Street, my name is Bolli, yeah, I, I want to make comment.
Do you solemn swear affirm testimony, about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do, yeah, I think there's some existing fundamental issue and infrastructure issue, you can mention a little bit already, but I want to re, re, revisit that, there's one, is this three-way intersection with sharp turn into narrow corner, that is how I characterize the area, so it's a one-lane street with two-way traffic, the street at the intersection, they are jammed.
Talk into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
The street at the intersection are jammed with parents' car daily, when they drop off their kid and pick up their kid, kid await and wander around at their area all the time, waiting for their parent, it's very hard for any car to drive through at this corner without increasing risk. During the traffic jam, parents often have to make U-turn on the one-lane street after picking up their kid or dropping up, dropping off their kid, and always, almost always have to borrow residents' driveway to make the turn, okay? The second issue is, there is no underground drainage system on the street, on the whole street, to take care of water runoff from the rain, especially when it's surge, when the storm surge, I always have a, I took picture of the, how severe the water, water flooding in my front on the street, this is after the surge, before, when it's rain stop, I can see it's still a lot of water on the street, and if you got interest, you can take a look, see how bad it is, and also, the, I also take a picture at the corner where the kid are waiting for their parent every day, there's a lot of tree there, they love it, I believe, because it provides shade, and if they chop down all these trees off, they waiting barely, over there, increase their risk, okay? And also is very limited visibility when you have to make turn, it's very difficult to go, go through the traffic if, during this time when the parent is waiting like a 30 minutes, at least, so therefore, I oppose to build three two-story house at this corner, reason is, more two-story house squeezed in this corner, meaning smaller driveway for each house, even their two-car, two-car garage, because big family normally have more cars, and they, they would tend to park on the street, because backing out from the driveway into a one-lane street near the intersection is so dangerous, very hazardous, you never know, the car can make a turn way away, there's no, only one-stop sign at there, and it's very dangerous to back out, and so they tend to make their convenience just park on the street and drive off easily, that is human nature, nothing you can do about it, I also take a picture of a street before the Preston Street, that's a good example, about one-lane, two-way traffic, when the car parked fully on one side, this is only one side, I haven't had a chance to see two sides, it happened, when the more friend or, you know, when they all come back home at night, when you drive through the area, you can only allow one car to drive through, and you have to pull in, let the guy come, or the other way around, it's always happened, so having three houses there, it will cause more trouble, and also for the one-off, for the water one-off from the rain, I believe when you have more houses, more driveway, two-car garage, big driveway, big asphalt driveway, or concrete driveway, those are not good for the one-off, they are not absorbing to the ground, they just pass to, to the street, okay, and, and you mean less, fewer yard, front yard relatively, so make the situation worse, so this one-off water is always really bad, so having three houses there, I believe only make it worse, those drywall, I study a little bit, it only take enough water, and then the overflow, they will just push it out to the street, even to your lawn, it will get flooded, when the storms get surge, is, that is the problem, if normal raining might not be a problem, but in New Jersey, there's always storm surge and causing a lot of trouble, okay, that's all my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Trina Smithia-Garaja, 46 Preston Street, and I object to it because of the water conditions, as well as the congestion as well, that's basically it, to interrate to everything that everyone else has said.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
When the last applicant, when the last homeowner was speaking, we had a chance to take a look at Google Earth also, and I don't see any inlets on Preston Street, so I know Mr. Fletcher has said he's going to be directing the water to the nearest inlet, I think it really would be helpful if he went and explored to see where those nearest inlets are.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pipola?
I don't have a grading map here, how is that land graded, is there a high point, or does that land all flow to the street?
He, the way he is designing it, the, from the middle of the house forward is designed to flow to the street, from the middle of the house back is, is designed to flow toward the school property, and then in the middle of the third lot, there's a high point on the road, so he's directing the water in both directions along the road, and where that water's going to go is, is along the curb and gutter, but we don't know, you know, it's not going to an inlet that we can see, because there's no inlets on Preston Street.
All right, so for those first two lots that you had indicated, that it looks from the middle of the house or so, the house is, I think, from reading the plans, it's about 50 by 50, it's 2,500 square feet, the lot is 10,000 square feet, so I think it's reasonably, reasonable to expect that 25% of the existing water you get now will be collected by the drywells, correct?
Yep.
And half of that, half of that now, or maybe a little less than half of that now, flows away from the street on those two lots.
Correct.
So that, those, those two lots anyway, those two drywells should reduce the flow of water to the street by 50%, I would guess.
It sure, yes, if it's built, the way, the way it's designed, yes.
Madam Chair, also Dennis, also if you have the perk there, you don't know what you got, right, with the perk yet, you didn't do the, you didn't do the perk yet, right?
I think it's a perk.
We have not done the public test yet.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that wants to speak?
Let me ask you this, the applicant, the attorney, what about, what about finding out where the inlet is in the area?
We're going to request that this matter be carried.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Without requiring re-notification.
Right.
And give Mr. Fletcher an opportunity to investigate the nearest inlet.
Also, maybe do a perk test there, too, and see what?
The seasonal high-water test will be done, if you need it done before.
It would be helpful, because then we'd know if that water could absorb into the ground, and before we make our decision.
We'll be back with that information.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Can we, we should close the public session.
Right, I think it's, we should close the public portion first?
No, no.
Is there anybody else?
Oh. They said no.
Is there anyone else? Please come forward, name and address.
Make a motion to close the public session?
Second.
It seems to me if we're going to carry this, it seems to me the public's going to have another opportunity to comment on the revised plans, and we should leave this matter open until we come back and give the public another shot to, to talk to the changes to the plan that are proposed.
I agree.
I would also ask a question again of our engineer, I don't think we've ever done it before, but we've got some creative minds here, all these engineering expertise we have here, is there any, I'd like to stretch one's imagination, have we ever solved all the water in drywells on the entire lot, is that feasible to take care of? Is that feasible to take care of all the water? You know, an extra dry well or two on a lot? Does that make any sense?
It does, and it'll depend on the results of the salt house, whether it's feasible.
Fine. I would just, let's not exclude that if there's a possibility. It's obviously, there's a concern to the residents here about the water, and if we got an opportunity to do something about it, I think you guys would be great neighbors if you, we seized that opportunity to do something to improve the entire neighborhood, if it's possible. I don't know.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I agree with Dennis. So, you know, if you could solve the water problem that's coming from in front of those houses, rather than just taking it and pushing it in front of some other houses there, that would be a benefit to the neighborhood, right? I mean, if we can do that. So it'd be, like you said, you're going to go down, you're going to see where the nearest catch basin is and see what it, what it would take to maybe tie into that catch basin and clean up that water issue there in front. And also check the perk there for us, so we know what we got.
So we will do that. We will look for a solution with perhaps the nearest storm drain, and we will do seasonal, seasonal high water pit test. And to Mr. Pipola's suggestion, possibly add a dry well.
We'll investigate it.
We'll investigate it.
Okay. It's feasible to be done by September 16th.
No.
So we're going to put you to October 15th.
Okay. And I do not have to re-notify.
The neighbor, do you hear?
Can we come back?
Oh, no, you come back.
And we're keeping the public portion open.
October 15th.
October 15th. And I have another question. All the other residents that got letters that were unable to attend tonight's meeting in Bangkok, October 15th. Okay. Word of mouth.
I, I don't know if it's possible, but the, the suggestion by the one gentleman about the traffic issues there, I don't quite understand that because I think when I was out there, that's, that area's, it's, it's a football field away from the building. I can't believe there's that much congestion. But if there is, maybe we could ask the, if we have a connection or somebody in the police department, just to take a look at that when school is in session, so we could-
Big guy.
The only thing is, the school's way over there, but they enter and exit from Preston Street.
From Preston Street.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Did we get any reports from Tim Alexander on this?
Well, I have the police one over there.
Oh, we, so that would, see what it says.
Was the school also notified of this?
He doesn't go look at it, but they're asking for it. He has to look at it for-
Is the, is the quantity of traffic, any change in quantity?
Like you did, like Google Earth or something. If you want him to go out and look at school time, then I would have to ask him.
Why don't we have him go out and look at it during the peak traffic?
School hours would be perfect.
Yeah.
School hours would be perfect, especially if we have a snowstorm. Only one person can, one car can get to in front.
We can't do that. You're not sworn in, okay?
Yeah, if we, if we have a connect, if there's a connection or something, maybe we could put a no parking sign up there or something like that.
There you go.
Residents only or something like that.
It's already there.
It's already there.
It's ignored.
Write some pickets, maybe, by your enforcement.
All right. So we're holding this over to October 15th. It's a Tuesday.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. But it's by word of mouth now, so you're in charge.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the residents here are in charge, so you got to tell your neighbors.
Okay, so, no re-notice, but October 15th. Okay, the next application-
Madam Chair.
We need a motion to carry this.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to carry this to October 15th, and no requirement for re-notice.
He'll second the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next application is P-14 dash 2019, federal business, 140 Fieldcrest Avenue, block 390 dot D, lot 9.8. And the applicant has come forward.
Thank you. Good evening, for the record. I'm Donna Jennings of the law firm of Willens, Goldman &amp; Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant. As the board chairwoman correctly indicated, the applicant is here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to expand an existing warehouse facility located at 140 Fieldcrest Avenue and identified as lot 9A in block 390D on the township's tax maps. Specifically, the applicant proposes to add approximately 74,012 square feet of warehouse space to an existing building, add 19 loading docks and 40 parking spaces. Although there are no variances or waivers requested with this application, the applicant is requesting two submission waivers. First, the applicant seeks a submission waiver with respect to submission of a fiscal impact statement, as the proposed expansion of the existing warehouse will only be more profitable to the township with no impact on the school system. Second, the applicant seeks a submission waiver related to providing a traffic impact statement. As the applicant's engineer will testify, the additional warehouse use will have minimal impact on traffic and the existing access to the site will remain unchanged. Also, the existing road network within Raritan Center was originally designed to accommodate full build-out of the available land areas within the center. The applicant's witnesses will provide testimony to support the request for the two submission waivers. In support of the application, the following two witnesses will be called to testify. Robert Espaza, the applicant's site engineer, and David Cochran, the applicant's architect sitting to my left. Finally, as a matter of record-keeping, the applicant has received the following reports. Bignell's planning report dated August 16th, 2019, and Delaware Raritan Engineering Report dated August 14th, 2019. So with that, I'd like to bring up our first witness, if we can be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testament about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spelling for the record.
David Cochran, C-O-C-H-R-A-N.
Okay. And if you could, Mr. Cochran, for the benefit of the board, please give your background and qualifications.
I'm a licensed architect, professional planner, and a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And can you just indicate your experience before the board?
Yes, I have testified as an architect, professional planner, and professional engineer before this board several times.
Okay. And I assume in other municipalities as well?
Yes, I have.
I'd like to have the board accept his qualifications as a licensed architect.
We'll accept you as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And if you could, what is your role today with this application?
I'm the director of architecture and engineering for the applicant, federal business centers.
And can you discuss why the applicant is seeking this expansion?
Yes, I'd like to mark, mark the first exhibit first. I guess that would be A1.
Okay. A1, and can you identify that for the record, please?
Yeah, yes, that's a floor plan of the existing building and the proposed addition. The property was purchased in 2004 with the intention of constructing a warehouse addition at the rear of the building. We plan to market the addition as a speculative warehouse.
Okay. And the floor plans and the elevations that we're looking at were prepared by your office?
That's correct. The floor plan and elevation is prepared by me, and I have them before you tonight.
Okay. Why don't you just go through your plans, please?
Yes. The first exhibit shows the existing building in a light yellow color and is 59,690 square feet with eight overhead doors. The proposed addition of 74,012 square feet is shown in a darker yellow in the rear with 19 new overhead doors. The fully built-out warehouse structure will be 133,702 square feet and 27 overhead doors.
Now, you have a second exhibit, anything you indicated?
Yes. If we would take the elevations and show them and mark them A2.
And that's the elevations?
That's correct. The top elevation is the north or left elevation, showing 19 new nine-foot by 10-foot overhead doors and a personnel entrance to the left. The second from the top elevation is the east.
Can I interrupt for a moment?
Sure.
I don't think that the television camera can get-
I think it's going in that corner. I think it's better for the TV. Are you okay with that, Steve? Like over? Esther's not here, she would have told you.
[laughing].
She would have come to me.
Did she call in?
Is that better?
Okay, just again-
That's a good image, yeah.
Yeah. That's A2 we're talking about, right?
Right.
The elevations. Okay, I'm sorry, continue.
Okay. The second from the top elevation is the east or rear elevation, showing small windows on the right side. And the second from the bottom elevation shows the south or right elevation with high windows to allow light into the warehouse. The bottom elevation is the west or front elevation, showing that the existing front elevation will remain as is, except for some high windows, which will not be able to be seen from the street along the additions beginning in the rear of the building.
Now, with respect to the height of the two structures, can you compare those?
Yes. The existing building is one-story, which is 25.2 feet high. The proposed addition is one-story with a 36-foot height. The site plan is being corrected to show this 36-foot height.
Okay. And the height is in compliance with the ordinance, correct?
Absolutely.
And if you could just go through the materials and colors that are anticipated to be used?
Yes. The existing building is concrete tilt-up panels, but we are thinking about constructing the addition with block and then painting the entire structure in a harmonious beige and brown color to match the majority of the Raritan Center warehouses.
Okay. And one of the submission waivers the applicant is seeking is with respect to the traffic impact. Do you have an opinion with regard to that?
Yes, we are seeking a waiver for the traffic impact statement based on the following facts. Raritan Center's road network was designed by Frederick R. Harris, the New Jersey Turnpike's original designer, and was designed for a full build-out. B, the Raritan Center's road system is working well. And finally, the additional traffic caused by this warehouse addition is minimal and already built into the original road capacity design.
Okay. And you had an opportunity to review the two reports submitted by the board's consultants?
Uh, yes, I did.
And are there any specific comments directly related to the architectural elevation that you think need to be addressed at this time?
I do not believe so. I think the questions that they're interested in are going to be answered by the engineer.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for this witness.
Yeah, Mr. Pipola?
I was over there this afternoon, and it looks like you're refurbishing the first building there, a forward building. Is that correct? Looks like all the docks, dock doors in the back are being done.
Yes, we're working on that. There are four, there were four existing overhead doors. We're making that eight with all pit levelers on all overhead doors.
Well, you, you mentioned about finishing off or painting or the facade.
Right.
Will all that match then? The older building and that building all have one same finish?
Right. We're going to paint the entire building the exact same color in the rear and the front, so everything will match.
It doesn't look like anyone else-
No.
Has any questions.
Okay. I'll bring up our next witness, please.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testament about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spelling for the record.
Robert Espaza, E-S-P-A-S-A.
And if you could, Mr. Espaza, give the board the benefit of your background and qualifications.
Sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 2001, also licensed in New York. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I've been preparing site plans in the state of New Jersey for the past 20 years. I've testified before numerous boards in the state of New Jersey, including this board.
Let the board accept his qualifications as a professional engineer?
We shall.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, was the site plan prepared under your direction?
It was.
And if you could describe the existing site conditions, and if you can rely on any boards, we'd need to mark those into evidence, please?
Sure. I already marked that as A3. It's an aerial image of the property, with the rectangle in the middle being the property itself.
Okay. And if you could, then, just discuss the existing site conditions.
Sure. So as stated, it's located at 140 Fieldcrest Avenue. It's identified as lot 9A, block 390D. It's a 6.75 acre lot in a Raritan River revitalization zone within Raritan Center Industrial Park. It's bound by Fieldcrest Avenue to the west and similar industrial properties to the north, to the east, and to the south. It's currently developed with an existing warehouse building. It's an office space totaling 59,690 square feet. It's a one-story building at 25.2 feet in height. There are currently 30 parking spaces and eight loading docks, and the access is off of Fieldcrest Avenue with a 24-foot wide driveway.
Okay. And if you could discuss the applicant's proposal?
Sure. If we can just flip the drawing.
You want to mark that A4?
That's marked A4 already.
And describe it for the record?
It's a colored site plan rendering, the same site plan that's in the package. So we're proposing to put a 74,012 square foot warehouse addition with office space. So adding that to the existing building for a total of 133,000 square feet, it's 702, 133, 702 square feet. The proposed addition will be a one-story, 36 feet in height. As mentioned, the cover sheet of the drawing currently shows the proposed building as 25.2 feet in height, the same as existing. That's incorrect. We'll revise that to the 36-foot and resubmit that drawing. Just talking about garbage and refuse, I think this was a comment in one of the, I think in the engineer's review letter. Garbage will be handled the same way it is today with the existing warehouse building with an outside license hauler and a compactor alongside the loading dock area.
And if you could confirm that there's no variances or design waivers sought-
That's correct.
-in connection with the application? And if you can discuss parking and circulation, there were a number of comments in Mr. Bignell's report relating to same, so if you could go through that, please?
Sure. So we are adding 40 additional car parking spaces for a total of 70. There's 30 existing. 65 are required by ordinance. Parking spaces are nine foot by 18 in court, in conformance with the ordinance. We are proposing additional 19 loading dock doors. Access to the site will remain unchanged off of Fieldcrest Avenue with that 24-foot wide driveway. As mentioned, the parking and loading additions will have minimal impact on the surrounding roadways in the industrial park.
Okay. And the access, in your opinion, is adequate to handle the addition?
It is. It's adequate for trucks and cars.
And the site circulation is also designed adequately?
It's a, kind of mimic as, as it does today, yes.
Okay. And if you could discuss utilities, please?
Sure. All utility connections to the building addition will be internally connected to the existing building, so there will be no connections to the new, to the utilities in the right of way. It'll all be internal. There are no NJDEP permits or water and sewer required, as we won't meet the thresholds for water and sewer demands.
Okay. And if you could discuss lighting?
Yes, we'll be providing both pole-mounted lights for the new parking lot expansion and three building-mounted lights at the loading dock, all at 25-foot mounting height. We're also providing lights at the three doorways of the building addition. All lights will be LED. We'll have an average foot, foot handle of 2.2 foot candles, and all lighting is met, will meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay. And if you could address landscaping, and I know Mr. Bignell also had a couple of questions with respect to the landscaping.
Sure. So the site is currently 40% wooded, as discussed at the TRC. Due to the limited areas for planting and because the site frontage is already planted, we're not proposing any landscaping at this time. For the tree replacement and wood and management calculations, we are removing 150 trees. So with the calculations, 170 trees are required to be planted. The applicant will be contributing to the Edison Tree Fund for these trees.
Okay. And that goes along with the street trees and the parking area trees as well?
So the, the tree, the street trees, like I mentioned, the site is already planted along the frontage. There was a comment in Mr. Bignell's letter about adding trees around the parking lot front, frontage, which will result in additional six trees, which we can discuss planting
my report basically is looking for the calculations, so that they are in compliance. Those are the existing trees along the right-of-way, they're supposed to be placed every 50 feet, they appear to be so. The, the report from TRC mistakenly said it complied with the six trees, I'm not sure if it does or not, so this report asks for that calculation for the perimeter of the parking, because they're supposed to provide a tree every 50 feet. I don't think it'll all fit on the site, but I want to get the exact number right, so they know what they have to pay into the tree fund. Okay?
Understood, thank you for clarifying.
And this is item E in your report?
D and E.
D and E?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Then if you could also just discuss the stormwater management, please?
Sure. The project will increase impervious surface by 2.77 acres, therefore, stormwater management detention is required for the site. We're proposing two underground detention systems below the loading dock pavement areas. One will treat the runoff from the building addition's roof, and the other will treat the runoff from the parking and loading areas. Parking and loading areas will require water quality treatment, so we are proposing a water quality device downstream of that detention system. Both systems will be designed to convey, to attenuate the, up to the 100-year storm, and will reduce the peak runoff rates for post-development conditions to less than pre-existing conditions per stormwater regulations.
Okay, and if you could, can you just advise us the status of any outside agency approvals?
So, we have submitted to Middlesex County, we're waiting for that approval. We have freehold soil approval for the early foundation, early soil movement permit, but we're waiting for an amendment for that permit for the full development.
And I was, Mr. Bignell had a comment?
Well, I didn't want to interrupt his testimony. My concern, I still have two concerns with the traffic flow on site, the combination of the truck movements and the cars. Can we get a little more testimony on that maybe, to how, you know, they're all out there just maneuvering around this large paved area? Usually, we ask that they be separated on a new building. Have they made, are they gonna paint some arrows directional for cars and trucks, or what keeps everybody from just having a free-for-all?
So, it's, we're matching what happens, what exists today, we're not proposing any striping or signage, but-
Yeah, but you add more cars to it, and, and I'm just, you know, concerned what the operation's gonna be like, you add 19 more overhead doors, and so there's gonna be more truck traffic on site, so that's why the report asked for, so you give some thought and some testimony for this evening. It was in the, it was in the TRC-
Yes, I think the applicant would be agreeable to add some striping and signage for pedestrians and crosswalks and things like that.
Well, I'm concerned about the car, the flow of traffic on site between the cars and the tractor trailers. They're all sharing the same pathways, and it just seems to me that that's kinda, that's not a safe situation. I know it's an existing situation, but has the applicant made any kind of attempt to correct some of that? Some testimony maybe on the number of trucks and, you know, hours of operation when people are coming and going, and that type of thing, just to kind of relieve my fears just a little bit.
Hank, excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yeah, Councilman.
In, in the DNR report, it says that the applicant submitted a vehicular circulation plan has been provided as requested.
Well, I'm asking to provide some testimony to that.
Oh, okay. Do we have that planned, though?
I haven't seen it, so if they've seen it, that's, my concern is the, is the trucks and the cars moving all in the same, in the same space at the same time. And while they're discussing that, the other issue I have is the parking of vehicles on site that aren't associated with this operation. I ask that that be a condition of approval, that they don't store or rent spaces to outside auto dealers and things like that to store vehicles on site.
If you can have one of the applicant's representatives address the traffic flow. The site's been operational for a number of years, and they haven't had any issues, so they'll just kind of address that.
Yeah, that'd be fine, but I just want to know how the, the new cars are gonna impact on that, and just a little more testimony. Okay? Thank you.
While we have Rob up, though, are there any additional issues in your reports, Mr. Bignell, that need to be addressed by this witness?
Yeah, just the parking of cars that are not associated with this operation on site. So, you can't like rent space to store, you know, new cars or things like that on a property. Do you have any objection to that, or?
No objection, no objection. We see that, that's fine.
So, if we make that a condition of approval, that's not gonna be an issue?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then I don't know if there are any open issues on the Delaware Raritan Engineering Report? I think we addressed everything?
Yes, we'll comply with all of those.
That's all I have for this witness.
Looks like everything is in, okay. Any other comments for this witness?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasy?
Did you prepare sheet number C-16?
Yes.
And that, that is the vehicle circulation plan?
It is. It really, really shows how trucks access the site and back into the loading dock doors.
And emergency vehicles, but it doesn't talk about vehicles, cars. I'm trying to, you're, you're, they're doing two things here, they're adding cars in with the traffic flow of the trucks, and I'm trying to get some testimony on that, that's all I'm asking for.
Well, yeah, C-16-
That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, C-16 was just to show that a truck can get in and out of the site and the maneuvers that it can do.
May I ask, do you have somebody to rent this space, or is it still spec?
The rear is a spec right now.
So, you don't know how many trucks are going in, you don't know the-
Well, there's only so many dock, loading docks-
Yes.
And there's only so many car spaces, so there's only so many employees that can come in. And so, if you see the rear of the building is designed exactly like the front of the building, so that we have the truck loading docks on the one side and the car parking on the other, but I'll have one of the representatives speak, because obviously I'm not testifying, and they'll tell you how it's working right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Before I move testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Patrick Connelly, C.O.N.N.E.L.L.Y.
And if you could, Patrick, just give your position with the applicant, please, and your responsibilities.
Sure, I'm the Executive Director of Operations Division, which essentially oversee all of the daily operations for the 67-plus buildings that we have in Raritan Center, including the new development.
Okay, and if you could, you've heard some concerns expressed by Mr. Bignell and some of the board members, they're really looking to understand how the site circulation with the trucks and the cars works today, and how it anticipates working in the future.
Sure, so even though we anticipate and accommodate for two potential tenants within the building with this expansion, we really feel that most likely there would be an expansion within the building perhaps. So, right now, the way the building operates, then there is an office in the front, and there is a separate office parking area within that area that is separate from the truck core. In the rear of the facility, we feel that this type of a, of a space will attract someone who is really just a warehouse user without a big office presence, because again, it's in the back of the building. So, that said, we feel that, you know, we've built the spaces to accommodate the ordinances, but we really don't feel there's gonna be a lot of office employees. And, and a warehouse such as this, there's not a lot of warehouse employees either, but that said, what typically happens is the warehouse employees would come in at the beginning of the shift before, you know, trucks start arriving. And this is typical for a lot of our facilities that, as was mentioned, have been built before these new ordinances taken place. So, this is common throughout Raritan Center that we have the combination of trucks and cars. So, then, you know, the workers get in and then the trucks start arriving. The workers don't generally go in and out of the building much, because, you know, they usually either bring their lunch, or there's the mobile lunch vehicles that come in. So, they work while the trucks are coming in and out, you know, then the day closes and the trucks are no longer entering the site, and then they egress the site in their cars. So, there really is very little interaction between the cars and the truck, and, and the trucks during the course of a normal day. And again, we feel this is gonna be a lower-impact type of a facility because of the nature of the way it's being added on to the back. And so, in the front, we do have accommodation for the front office that's separate. But here, we feel the low-impact of the back, it should, it should work just like a lot of the other facilities do in Raritan Center.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peasy?
But somewhere in the warehouse, you'll have a, a small office that's gonna be running the scheduling?
Sure, yeah, so we do anticipate there'll be a small office, I'm not saying there's gonna be no interaction or anything, but yeah, there'll be, the small office will comply with everything, have all the amenities that would be needed for the workforce there.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Khan?
If it's fully occupied, this area, how many tenants you're looking into, let's say, how many tents per each door, or maybe you're gonna have to divide into?
So, so, we would only divide this building between the existing building that you saw today, the existing, and the new, so there would be a total of only two tenants at this building. Most likely, even just one, if the front tenant, if we're lucky enough for the front tenant to expand into the back. As was mentioned, we're doing some improvements to the building, but, so we would, there would not be feasible for us to do any more than two tenants.
This 18 doors gonna open into, right, this, the rear portion of the building, correct?
Correct.
So, you're not doing any kind of renovation partition walls or anything in that, so you can, later on, you decide, okay, let's see, four garage doors, and I can subdivide, put a partition wall, and make a tenant? What is the possibility of that?
Almost nil for us, the way this building is set up. We have other facilities that service that type of use, but because of the nature of the way this building is set, how, how deep the building is and how narrow those spaces would be, it's not, it's just the cost of actually putting the walls and separating out all of the individual units is not something that would be feasible for this building.
The tenant, existing tenant on the occupied section of the area, they will, they can utilize these spaces or not?
So, they would only be utilizing the existing structure as you see it today, so, so that wall would remain in place, so there would be a separation wall between the existing building and the new building, so, unless, unless they decided to take the rest of the building. But at this point, that's not what's contemplated.
So, you're planning to just rent to one tenant? Or what, I, I am a little confused about that.
Yes, yes, so, so the new facility would, would house one tenant. Throughout Raritan Center, you know, that's a typical size space, the 74,000, you know, and frankly, you know, within the genre of the warehousing industry is actually on the smaller side for most others, you see these big, huge buildings, but for us, a 50 to a 75,000-square-foot unit is quite common in Raritan Center.
Mr. Bignell, did you have any suggestions in terms of striping or signage, or?
Well, I, you know, the problem is, are you bringing tractor-trailers in that are normal to that operator, so that those people will, I guess, park their truck at night and take their car home, or are these people coming from off-site that have never been there before? And then, that's my concern of, of not knowing where they're going when they get to the property. Is there any kind of controls or arrows or any kind of pattern that they can follow in a safely, in a safe, in a safe way?
So, we'd, we'd be willing to work with you on that, and, you know, as was said earlier, put our heads together with you and come up with something that's safe. Because that's, that's one of our priorities as well, so we'd be glad to do that with you.
And that's, that's my concern, I'm not trying to make a big deal out of it, Madam Chair, but that's still a concern of mine, because the trucks turn out, and they're going all day long, and the cars are trying to back out and whatever, and they're very close to their turning, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pipola?
It seems to me, maybe a simple two-lane drive just opposite the parking spaces, and no trucks allowed in that section, because all your parking is along the perimeter, so all you need is a lane around the, all the parking spaces around the perimeter.
Via striping, doing striping?
Yeah.
Sure.
No trucks allowed, they have to get out, they can't occupy the same land.
Trucks will have to enter that in order to back into the-
No, but there's, there's a hundred- There's a hundred and something feet between those doors and them-
Shows it on the turning radius on C-16 that the trucks are gonna end up adjacent to the parking lot in order to be able to back in. So, I don't think that we can impose a solution on this, simply-
Not imposing, I'm suggesting that that be looked at as an alternative.
So, typically, what we would have is, we've, we've designed the site, which is, which is common, it's 130 feet from the edge of the building to the edge of the parking space, which usually 120 is the minimum you'd want, we've done 130, so it wouldn't be feasible to say that they couldn't enter that little space entirely, but certainly, we could stripe it that they can't park there or, or stage there. That way, it's clear from the trucks.
Madam Chair, one quick question to the-
Yes, Mr. Khan?
74,000 square feet of the warehouse, how many guest employees to run that?
If it was, if it was E, it was e-commerce, the parking lot's not big enough, and if it's just warehousing, you know, it might have two or three workers, four workers, it all depends on what, what they're shipping and what they're, you know, receiving and sending out. So, until he has a user, it's very difficult to answer that question. All right, if it's just gonna be used as strictly as a warehouse, you know, what, how, how often do the trucks go through, how much merchandise do they, 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 they move around during the day? If it's a real big operator, it can be really, really busy, it can be a lot of, a lot of employees. If it's a very small operation-
Like Amazon, so.
Amazon is a different animal, that's a, that's a, I would almost say e-commerce, so it's constant, you know, it could be 24 hours a day in a place like that.
Probably not enough parking on the site for-
No, no.
And they really look for big, huge warehouses, not these little buildings like we have.
Yeah. So, it's very hard to answer your question, Mr. Khan.
But we are limited, again, by the parking, and 65 are required, and we have 70, but that's it, there's no space for any additional parking.
But the problem is that once you get approved, and then we have no way of finding what all you're renting to.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Maybe I can help with his, Mr. Khan's thinking. My concern is that they don't need the spaces for the people working in the building, and they're gonna rent it to somebody else to use in the store. I don't think they're gonna use it, that many spaces in a ware, a typical warehouse operation, I don't think they're gonna have 70 employees. So, I think they have, in that regard, they have enough parking. I don't want to take the open parking, and then say, oh, we got extra spaces, we can rent them out, that's my concern. I'd be more afraid of that than anything else. And they've already agreed to that condition, not to do that.
And, and just so you know, in the front, there's only three or four employees, so there's not a lot of car traffic, and we will agree to the condition that we're not gonna allow somebody else to lease our parking spaces and store their cars there.
Anyone else?
That's a-
You finished with your, your case?
Yeah.
I think at this point, then, I'm looking to the public, if anyone would like to speak as to this application, please come forward, your name and address.
Having seen no one come forward, I'd like to make a motion, we close public portion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant preliminary and final approval for this application, and the requested, which includes the requested waivers for fiscal impact statement, and also the traffic study, with the following conditions: first and foremost is adherence to our, all the conditions, I believe you indicated in your comments earlier, all the conditions and recommendations made by our DNR subject in their August 14th memo, and Bignell planning in their August 16th memo. I will also add the condition, as indicated, which we talked about, that there be no part, that the only parking and usage of, will be based on the vehicles of the tenant in use at that time, no outside of others.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to second that motion with one observation, that Mr. Bignell already covered the 170 trees required, and, and the to-be-determined trees, the six trees, whatever, would be part of the Bignell report compliance.
Also, Dennis, you want to add your little clause there at the end about any changes?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Also, add, if you will, add our standard clause that indicates that if there are any changes to the conditions and approvals of this application, that you, you need to come back before this board to, to request the approval of those changes. Thank you, Mr.-
Okay, so, we have motion, a second? Yes, for preliminary and final?
Yes.
Mr. Correct?
Yes.
House Member Jim Johnson?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Solbys?
Yes.
Mr. Peasy?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Stain?
Yes.
Thank you, have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, the next application, P-18 dash two thousand and nineteen, Edison Land Investment, Route One, Block one ninety-eight L, Lot thirty-seven point zero nine, and the applicant has come forward.
Good evening, thank you. Jay Rattigan from Harts Mountain, here presenting the application tonight. Very happy to present, very excited about it, as we all are. All of our applications, the Chipotle restaurant at the Edison Town Square site. I have three witnesses this evening. We'll be fairly brief, we hope, but just to frame the issues before the board, it's a, an amended preliminary and final site plan approval, minor subdivision. We are seeking a planning variance because this particular, as part of the subdivision, this site will not front on a public road, but it does have access and it'll be safe access, and you'll hear testimony to that effect. So, and we do have two review reports that we've seen, Mr. Bignell's report and the Delaware Raritan Engineering Report. I should say, Mr. Bignell's report is dated July seventeenth, and the Delaware Raritan Engineering Report is dated...
Madam Chair, I don't mean to interrupt, but this does front on a public road. You don't have access from the public road, but...
It doesn't have direct access.
But I don't believe you need a, I don't think you need a variance to that. That would be thirty-five and thirty-six on the land use law. I don't think you're required to do that.
All right, well, if that's your opinion...
I haven't seen the plan, so I can't speak to it.
Yeah, the, to be clear, the lot line doesn't extend out to the right-of-way. The lot line is sort of an island to itself within an existing parking area, and Mr. Omen, who's here, will explain.
Okay, whatever. It looks like, on your plan, it looks like it does extend out to the Route One, to the end of the, edge of the property. Okay, then I, I stand corrected.
So you all know Greg Omen, he's our site engineer, he'll be testifying. We do have a, I know you're anxious, you raise your hand, but I, we do have a, an architect and also a representative of Chipotle to talk very briefly about the operations that we anticipate at the facility. So with that, I'd present...
So I swear firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Sure, Gregory Omen, O-M-A-N.
I, Greg Omen's been here many times, been qualified as an expert. We would ask that the board stipulate those qualifications.
As an engineer only?
Yes.
Correct.
And you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Correct.
Okay, we'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Omen, I'll just turn it over to you, if you describe the project for us, please.
Sure. I have two exhibits that I've pre-marked. First is A1 with today's date entitled Overall Plan Exhibit. This is a colorized rendering of Sheet Two of the submitted engineering set plans, and basically every time we submit an application for a new tenant, this sheet gets updated. It's basically the full build-out plan, and it, it kinda helps us situate and, and help the board and their professionals on locating exactly what portion of the site we're actually working on for that application, but it also allows us to show how the different pieces of the puzzle all work together, not only for what exists out there today as previously constructed, but also what we're envisioning as the future applications that will be in front of this board when other tenants sign on and come to agreements with Harts Mountain. So, as the original approval way back many years ago was for approximately one point two million square feet of retail restaurants, office space, there was a hotel on site. Our DOT permit was also approved for that one point two million for volume of traffic. Our overall impervious coverage was designed for an eighty percent total build-out impervious coverage. That's how the retention basin and the onsite stormwater collection system was sized, approved, and constructed for an eighty percent build-out. The portion of the site that we're concentrating on today is the southwest corner of the property directly to the east or right, if you're standing in Route One, of the Sam's Gas Station. Currently today, that, that area is a parking lot that contains seventy-one parking stalls. Exhibit A-two, which is marked with today's date entitled Site Plan Exhibit, is a colorized rendering of basically a expanded view of that area. Again, to the west is the gas station, to the east is the Starbucks, there is the access road off of Route One that permits access to the main drive aisle within the center that runs in an east-west direction, and then Route One, obviously, to the south. What we are proposing here is not only a site plan for a twenty-three-hundred square foot Chipotle with drive-through, but we're also providing an application for a subdivision. Every time we come in with a new tenant, the property of the remaining area, which was originally ninety-six and a half acres, has been reduced down by subdividing the property for Topgolf, for Sam's. We have roughly about fifty-four acres now left over as the remainder lot. This particular application is for a subdivision for point-two-one acres, in which we're carving out a subdivision line that basically follows the face of curb surrounding the proposed Chipotle. The entire development from right-of-way to the main access road is approximately two-thirds of an acre. Circulation will be permitted in a counterclockwise direction, one-way traffic. We're proposing thirty-two parking stalls, nine feet in width by eighteen feet in depth, with two ADA parking stalls located along the eastern facade of the building. We're proposing a dumpster enclosure located at the northeast corner of the parking lot. That will be handled just as the other dumpsters are handled by a private hauler on site. Frequency is based on the amount of trash and recycled that the tenant happens to use. The entrance to the drive-through is located at the northeast corner of the building. As you work your way around to the north side, the menu boards are located, and then as you come around on the west side or the side facing the gas station, that's where the pickup window is located on the Chipotle. They're also proposing twenty outdoor seating spaces along the southern facade or the side facing Route One. As I had mentioned, the stormwater management for the entire site was previously designed for up to eighty percent. This full build-out, as we have designed, is approximately about sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent impervious. We are actually reducing the amount of impervious for this proposed application over what exists out there today with the parking lot, by approximately seventeen-hundred square feet. We are utilizing the existing collection system that's located, that was built as part of Phase One, and simply adding one additional curb inlet at the northeast corner to help collect some of the runoff that's being generated by the grading for this particular application. All utilities, including water, sewer, electric, telephone, and gas, are available either within the main drive aisle to the north or within Route, the right-of-way of Route One, which will supply adequate capacity to this particular facility. The existing lighting that surrounds this particular area is all gonna be reused. It provides ample light levels on all four sides of the building, but we are supplementing two specific areas where we're adding two LED fixtures, one hundred and ninety-nine watt, twenty-four and a half foot mount height, to provide the minimum point-five-foot candle requirement throughout the development. Our average is approximately two-point-oh-four, which is a little less than what the remaining site area and sites are, including the Sam's, iFly, and LA Fitness, which was previously around two and a half. So it's a little dimmer than what was previously approved and constructed by this board. In terms of landscaping, we're gonna maintain some of the existing landscape areas, especially the trees, on all four sides of this particular area. We are gonna redo the buffer along Route One and supplement some additional trees along the main access that don't exist there today. In total, we're proposing seventeen new trees, one hundred and seventy shrubs, and six hundred and seventy-five ground covers, which add some color, as you can see on the exhibit, along the northwest, northern portions of the site, including the main entrance off of Route One, just to the east of this development. We're proposing no new freestanding signs, but three facade signs. All facade signs are the same sign, it's the Chipotle logo, with a total of thirty-eight square feet per sign. The three signs will be located on the southern, eastern, and northern facades. There was a comment in Mr. Bignell's letter that he wanted to know what the building coverage and FAR is for the total build-out, and I can provide that. For the building coverage, we are permitted to have a total, if I can tell you, forty percent building coverage. We are at fourteen-point-three, and an F-A-A, F-A-R requirement maximum of point-three-two, we are less than half of that, we are at point-one-five for the overall. Lastly, as we have on some of these similar applications that have been in front of this board, we require two outside agency approvals for this, Middlesex County Planning Board for Site Plan and Subdivision Approval, and Freehold Soil Conservation District, because we are disturbing over five thousand square feet.
I have no further questions for the witness.
Anyone? I guess your next witness?
Madam Chair?
Oh, Mr. Pippa?
Mr. Bignell, there were, I think, a lot of addressing the issues that you had needed more information on. Are you satisfied with the test?
Yeah, that's why I'm writing this stuff down, because it was given to me as...
I have, I'm fine so far. The emergency vehicle, do you want to comment about that?
The, the last sheet of the set of plans that were submitted provides the SU-47 truck movement plan.
And how about the cross-access agreements? They're all in effect?
They are all in effect, yes.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yeah, there was an engineering question?
Yeah, item two-point-four in our memo.
Yes. What we are proposing is, instead of stopping the traffic that is leaving the gas station, as you approach the Chipotle entrance, heading in a south direction, as you're heading towards Route One, we're gonna put a stop arc and a stop sign condition there to allow this traffic to continue to move out of the gas station. You'd stop when that is clear, then you can make the left into the Chipotle.
Okay, yeah, if you could submit a revised plan showing that, we'll take a look at it and see if that, that should help eliminate some of the traffic issues we saw.
Madam Chair, just, just two questions for the engineer. One, when you guys put the new light in on Route One?
Yes.
And I guess it was the DOT did the original signalization of it. It messed up the traffic on Old Post Road tremendously, really bad. I don't know if that's completely worked out yet, if it's done, because I know they're gonna do on-demand traffic and all that other stuff, but it, it created a tremendous hardship for people on Old Post Road on both sides. So can you make sure that that is worked out?
Our, our office has been in contact with the DOT to get them, not only to modify that, but modify the signal that we proposed and had constructed right in the front of the property, because the activation isn't working.
Right.
I usually drive through this section ten after five in the morning to get to work, and when there's no one around, I still get caught at the light, and I'm sitting there and wondering, looking around, there's not one car around, and we have called the DOT, we have wrote, written a couple of letters. We're trying to work with them, not only that, but any of the other impacts.
And I know our engineers have met out there with them numerous times. We met in the, in the Starbucks parking lot. We're trying to explain to them what it does to the residents at peak hours in the morning and at night, and, and, you know, we keep hearing it from the residents. So that's something that really has to be worked out. It needs to be worked out.
We'll continue to push on our...
And the second thing is, I know that when you guys put the new entrance in, or the new light in at the entrance, the middle entrance there right on Route One, that you guys, I guess the state had said that you couldn't do the one point two million anymore. You were reduced in size? Is that correct?
Um, that I don't know. I don't know if that was, if there was a reduction on that. I could certainly find out, but right now, what we're looking at, our full build, as shown on this plan, is approximately six hundred and forty-seven thousand, so it's about half of what was previously approved.
Right, well, that's what I'm talking about. Originally, you had one point two million, right?
Correct, correct.
So they downsized it from one point two million to the six forty-seven?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, if there are no other questions for this witness, my next witness is the architect on the project, Robert Warszewski.
So I swear firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name and record.
Robert Warszewski, W-A-R-S-H-E-F-S-K-I.
First we'll qualify, try to qualify, Mr. Warszewski as an expert in the field of architecture, so towards that end, if you would please give us the benefit of your educational background and your work experience?
I graduated from NJIT with a Bachelor's of Architecture in ninety-eight, became a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey in around two thousand and six, and have been practicing in New Jersey and surrounding states ever since.
And you've been qualified by other boards as a field, as an expert in the field of architecture?
I have, not by this board, but others within New Jersey.
And your license is currently in good standing?
Yes, it is.
That's right. Proffer, Mr. Warszewski, as an expert in the field of architecture.
Have you testified before the zoning board here in Edison, or?
Uh, no, I have not.
Any other boards in the area that you just wanna mention?
Let's see, Howell, Homedale, Jersey City, Paramus, just to name a few. I'm sure there's a few others in there.
We'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. So, let's start things off. If you could just describe your experience with Chipotle and, and this particular facility, please.
Sure, I work for a firm called Greenberg Farrow. I'm an architect, an employee of that firm, and we've been doing business with Chipotle for the past seven years, plus or minus now, doing numerous projects in the state of New Jersey and surrounding states over that time period.
Thank you, and is this a model, is this project, the project is modeled after a prototype or a standard that Chipotle has used before in other areas?
It is, yes.
And as far as you know, functions well, operates well?
Uh, I would say yes, otherwise they would be having me change the plans all the time.
So just describe the, the restaurant layout first briefly.
Sure, it's a single-story restaurant, has indoor sign, seating with approximately fifty-five seats. There's a drive-through component as well, and there's an outdoor patio of twenty seats.
Thank you. And, you know, the square footage offhand of the customary area, the indoor dining area?
Yeah, the indoor dining area is approximately seven hundred square feet. The patio on the outside is approximately three hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay. You heard some testimony from Mr. Omen about the signage. Anything you wanna add in describing the signs?
Sure, so in the Bignell letter, there were some questions pertaining to some calculations for the signage. What's on the board right now, which I was starting to describe, I'd like to mark actually before we flip it, is Exhibit A-three. What that is, is a Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Plan Sheet A-one-thirty, dated May twenty-third. That depicts the layout of the interior of the space that I just testified. I also have a set of elevations with me as well, which I'd like to mark as Exhibit A-four. It's called Exterior Elevation Sheet A-three-zero-one, has today's date, August nineteenth. These elevations that are submitted are pretty much identical to what was submitted back in May, with the addition of the signage calculations added to it. So what we did was, we added the calculations for the three wall signs to show that they are in compliance with the zoning regulations in all aspects of height, size, area, illumination. I can go into as much detail as you would like, but this exhibit just shows that we're in compliance.
And, Mr. Warszewski, if you could just tell us about the lighting, if there is any on the exterior of the building?
There's no building-mounted lighting, other than a small emergency exit light that's on the rear elevation at the, the exit door. It's for emergency lighting only.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
Will you be submitting these revised plans to us, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this was in satisfaction of comment number eight in your report?
B and, it would be thirteen B and, and thirteen H in my report. All right.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing else for the witness.
Looking around, seeing no other questions?
Final witness? Just, very briefly, talk about the operations. We have a representative of Chipotle here, just to put a few questions before him. Representative of Chipotle here, just to put a few questions before.
Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Jeremy Zerbe, Z-E-R-B-E.
Thank you. Mr. Zerbe, just tell us what we expect, or you expect the hours of operation here to be, please?
Typically, we're open 10:45 to 10:00 p.m., and the crew usually comes in around 7:00, 7:30 in the morning.
And how many employees do you expect to have here, maybe at the largest shift?
Typically, nine to 11.
And how many employees on that larger?
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, nine to 11.
That's the ship, but how many people?
I think it's close to 30.
30 on the larger shift, you're saying?
Oh, no, 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 like, close to 11.
Nine to 11 people on the larger?
Yes, correct.
Oh, I think you meant that time period.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
And, I don't know if you know yet, but you know, or have you scheduled what you expect deliveries to be, what time the deliveries would be, trash pickup, that type of thing?
All the deliveries happen after hours. It varies the time depending on where it is on the delivery route for that truck, and trash is as needed.
I'm just looking, can you, can you hear it, or, okay? Okay, we're having trouble hearing you.
Sorry.
Maybe just repeat that last part.
Okay, yeah, trash is as needed, typically like four-plus times a week, depending on how much trash is used at the restaurant.
All right, that's all I have for Mr. Zerbe.
Yes, Mr. Khan?
So, how many parking space available right now is going to be proposed? And you're saying 11 employees is going to be there? So, that's required parking? And as we all go to Chipotle, there's a big, big lines over there, so what, what about the, can you explain that, please?
Well, we can answer, maybe Mr. Omen is the one who can answer the parking question, but it, you know, we look at the overall site when we look at parking. So, do you want to address the number of spots that would be available within the larger parking area?
Yeah, we, we have 32 stalls which are proposed around the Chipotle. Overall, on a full build-out, we're going to have a lot more. And the way the site's always worked is that there's a shared parking across the areas. Probably an answer more for the operations, but what we typically have been seeing with restaurants, with drive-throughs, is that the reduction of the amount of people that come to actually come into the building greatly, is greatly reduced. The ordinance only requires 11 parking stalls for this Chipotle, which I find hard to believe, but that's what the ordinance requires. It is kind of light. Like I said, we are proposing 32, and I think with the use of the drive-through, further reducing that, there's ample parking around that to handle any kind of, even during their peak hours.
Okay.
Roughly, what percentage of the business is done through the drive-through? Do you know offhand? Anybody got a guess?
It's typically about 20%, we found. And just to clarify, our pickup window is not a traditional drive-through. There's no ordering or any kind of menu board that you stop at an inter-commonplace and order. It's all based through your app and you just go to a designated time and pick up through the window. So, it's a very quick, smooth process that happens.
So, anybody with, with the proper app can order anything off the menu?
Correct.
And send that in, and you'll have it prepared, and they come in and pick it up?
Correct.
I was wondering how that worked.
There were a couple of issues from Mr. Bignell's report. We kind of lost through the report. I'm not sure which, I think probably the engineer is the one that would address it. I'm looking at 13, Comment I says that Mr. Bignell noticed that there's a lot of dying landscape on the site.
We'll reply with that. We'll replace any of that last year.
And then I just want to check with Mr. Bignell, did you get an answer to Comment D with the cross-access easements and the interior driveway?
Yeah, he said he would, he would provide all that information.
Okay. Anything from the engineer?
If I could, just to put it on record, when you file subdivision D, that's going to include all the cross-access easements, correct?
It'll, it'll make reference, yeah, we, and we, at Harts, we're perpetually updating.
You shouldn't warn all that in.
Yeah, we're perpetually updating the cross-easements as new tenants move in or new, new operators move in.
Madam Chair?
Yes, councilman?
A question for, for the engineer. Do you know, or anybody that can answer it? It seems like some of the driveways have been tore up lately there. Do you, do you, what is, what's going on over there with the driveways?
It's actually the construction of the LA Fitness and the iFly. As part of the LA Fitness reconstruction, the main drive aisle. Just to the east of the LA Fitness, this drive aisle here that runs in a north-south direction is all being reconstructed as part of the LA Fitness approval, in which the grades had to come up to bring up the intersection about five feet just to the northeast of the LA Fitness, which is going to allow, when we do move forward with future development, to get this building pad up to balance the site from an earthquake standpoint.
All right. I was just wondering what that was. And, and, and you know, when you're coming in off of Vineyard and then leaving, it's a little confusing as to getting back onto that road, which one to take if you're going to head towards Route 27 instead of Route One? The signage there could be a little better inside there, too. I don't know if you guys are going to do that, but.
Yeah, we, we'll look into enhancing internal directional signage.
Mr. Bignell, do you have a comment?
That's the modified British T, I think they call it, right? When they were, when they were.
English T.
English T, yeah.
I was just at the site Friday, and I've been working on this job since 2004, and when I'm sitting at the lake, I still look to make sure I'm turning in the right way. I'm not the traffic.
So, I, I have no further witnesses for this application.
Do we have any other comments from the reports, or you've agreed to all the?
Yeah, I think everything that, if there's anything that has not been addressed, there's nothing that we think poses a problem or that we can't comply with.
All right, anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, I think at this point, I'll open to the public. I didn't see anyone, but.
Having seen no one come forward, I come motion to close public session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant preliminary and final approval for this application with the following conditions. First, adherence and acceptance of all recommendations and comments made by our consultants as outlined in Mr. Bignell's memo of August the 2nd and Mr. Carley's memo of August the 5th. And finally, adding the proviso that there shall be no changes can be made to these conditions of approval without returning to this board to seek our approval of those suggested changes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, Lillian?
Mr. Mary?
Yes, to approve?
Mr. Pipola?
Yes.
Mr. Correct?
Yes.
House members of the House?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Colgate?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Is that what you?
Very good, thank you. Thank you very much, and good evening. So long.
Okay. Let's see, final and miscellaneous, there's nothing. No study of land use regulations. We were supposed to have the presentation from NJBPU Community Solar Program, but they are not here, so. Any other comments from the public? If no one has anything else.
Make a motion, we close the public session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think then, at this point, we, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
[music]